All right, thank you. It's 6:30 on Monday, the 28th, and welcome to the Millville Planning Board meeting. We have four of our planning board members here tonight. I'm Pam Maloney. We have Justin Allen, Brian Malali, and Chris Drew on with us. Let's start tonight with, I don't think, did you send the minutes over, Gabe?
I did.
Yes.
A little over an hour ago.
Perfect, got it. Did everybody have a chance to take a look at the meeting minutes from 12:14?
I did look at the minutes in regards to 18 Prospect. I thought we were going to reach out to all the other boards also, just to verify that they were all set with everything going on there per our commissioner's request from his first part of the meeting last time.
I reached out to, I reached out to, I was told to reach out to to Lincoln and the Highway Department and Public Safety.
Okay, so Lincoln was notified?
Yeah, he was notified. I haven't gotten any feedback from him.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
Perfect. Is there a motion to accept the minutes from 12:14?
I'll make the motion that we accept the December 14th minutes as written.
All right, Brian makes the motion. Somebody seconds it?
Second it.
All right, Justin seconds it. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor of accepting the minutes from December 14th?
Aye.
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 Chris, did you vote? Oh, he's on mute.
Ah, yes, I did. So I was just trying to read them real fast.
No worries. Gotcha. All right, thank you. All right, moving on tonight. Gabe, what do we have on the agenda for this evening?
Um, the two big things are, we're meeting again with the 18 Prospect Street folks. I sent you over an updated site plan. They met with Chief Landry and have updated their site plan, so I sent that over along with all the meeting materials from last time for their application.
Perfect, and I see the folks from 18 Prospect along with Chief Landry on the call with us tonight?
Yes, good evening.
Hey, how you doing, Chief Landry?
Good, thank you.
All right, so it looks like we have an updated site plan. Do we have somebody from 18 Prospect who wants to give us a quick overview? Cassie?
Hey, how are you guys today?
Hey, how you doing?
Good, thanks for having me. Um, so as you guys can see, we did make some changes. We met with the chief the week and some of the concerns that he had is keeping the traffic off of the street. A better to kind of flow, and this exit on Hope that traffic not going in both directions on both streets. I did send him over this so that he could take a peek at it and offer to make any changes if we needed to. But as you see in this, it would enter in Prospect, and then the drive-through would actually loop through our own property. And then the second lot would be more of an overflow lot and an exit.
Gotcha. Do we have the ability to share an image of this?
That is above me. Gabe?
Pam, do you have a copy of it?
I do. Can I share my screen?
Yes, please.
All right, that works.
Thanks, Rocco.
All right, are you guys seeing what I'm seeing with this plan? I'm going to try to blow it up some.
Perfect.
All right, perfect. So this is what we're looking at. I know that all the members of the planning board were given a copy of this, and I know that Chief Landry is on tonight to talk about this a little bit. Does does anybody have any questions taking a look at this plan, this new plan, or if the chief wants to weigh in, if this meets the expectation of what you guys spoke about?
Um, okay, hi, good evening. You know, the original plan of having the traffic enter and leave Prospect Street, in my opinion, was too great for that street and the intersection as well of Prospect and Central Street. That would definitely affect the quality of life and the traffic for those neighbors in that area. So I think the proper thing to do is the change that they did make where the traffic would come in on Prospect and you could leave by Hope. That would be dividing the traffic equally between two streets rather than just using Prospect Street. That just wouldn't have worked. Just be a monica that I anticipate. So I think by them changing their plan and using Hope Street is certainly much better than the initial plan.
Let's see. Gotcha. So in this plan, based on what we spoke about last week, the the kind of drive-up bank-like system that you guys have is in the same place. We're just, we're just driving in in a different fashion and creating a different pattern of traffic. Is that correct?
No, we actually switched the drive-through to the other parking lot. So we kind of swapped out what was our fire lane and brought our fire lane over to the other side where the drive-through was, so that we can ensure that all of the drive-through traffic can always be on our property.
Perfect, all right. This seems to address a lot of the concerns I know that we brought up the other day, and I like having traffic entering in one direction and leaving in another. I think that makes a lot more sense, especially considering the concerns that the board had last week, or I'm sorry, two weeks ago when we spoke. Does anybody else on the board have questions or thoughts regarding this new traffic pattern?
I think it's much, much better. My only question, I don't know if it's relevant or not necessarily, is when coming off of Prospect Street, should there be like some kind of a stop sign like near, kind of like the existing well? So if people are trying to come out from the, from picking up their order, that a car isn't blocking them, you know, saying kind of creating a situation where, you know, one car blocks the other.
Right.
You know, I don't know if that's something that's of concern, or, you know, people just, you know, be courteous and use their heads.
We'll take the assumptions that people will use their heads out, and we will absolutely have proper signage inside of our parking lot.
Okay.
The only thing I was gonna, the only thing I was gonna, my only suggestion to planning was also no parking signs on Prospect Street and Hope Street. The last thing I want for cars to stop and stay idling or standing, if you use that term, waiting to pull into that lot, you know, that simply can't be tolerated. So that sign, that side of the street is going to have to be posted, you know, no standing, meaning no parking and idling, waiting for them to turn into the facility. So that's something that's customary in other spots I've checked out throughout the state already. So there should be no cars stopped on Prospect Street or Hope Street, you know, either waiting to leave or go in. So that's going to have to be addressed with highway.
Yeah, does that, that need to go to the Board of Selectmen to get that put into place, I believe? I know we can do a temporary no parking, but something like this, I believe the Board of Selectmen are going to need to take a vote and put this into place for the no parking.
Well, I think, I think that the host agreement with Cassie mentions that if there's any parking on the street that police officers will be dispatched and paid for on a detail.
That, that's the other thing I did want to mention very, very briefly. I'd like the planning board to write some type of language in at either my discretion or your discretion or the Board of Selectmen's discretion, if we see a need for an officer to be there for traffic, that that's set into motion. Because if you remain silent on that issue, then there'll be no enforcement guidelines for us to go down there and do our job. We simply don't have the resources to babysit this place. And I've been very vocal about that. One man on the road, I can't spend time, you know, with the traffic issues at that facility. So I think something needs to be in place where, at my direction or someone else's direction, if we need, if we see fit, that we're going to need traffic control there. So I don't know how about that's going to be written in.
Chief, I believe
Yeah, good.
Host agreement?
Okay, I didn't see it. I haven't read the host agreement, but I wasn't sure if it's at their leisure or our leisure. But I would hope it's not at their leisure, and you leave it up to them to make the phone call, because business is business, and money is money. And I'm not saying it's not going to happen, but I'm not sure they're going to make that phone call.
Cassie is responsible for paying the detail fee, and also, in any case, you or Cassie can make the call. As you know,
I'm, I'm not too sure. I can, I can make the call without that being in writing. I can't make them, I can't obligate them to a detail officer. Like I can obligate other construction companies, depends on what street they're on, and Prospect and Hope is not generally one of those streets that we mandate police officers. So I think it should be in writing somewhere that if the, if the town sees the need, they will, you know, at their expense have a detail officer directing traffic. I don't think you just leave it vague where it's up to them, or maybe we have the discretion to do it. I'd like to see it written somewhere that we have the authority to mandate that.
Okay, you talked about this briefly at last week's meeting before this change of pattern, but I believe the board was kind of leaning towards asking about if detail could be available when the traffic, traffic flow of the facility was spilling out into the streets. I think we should probably talk about this a little bit further, but I know, I know on my end anyway, that's kind of the direction we were leading in, and I think that this new traffic pattern clearly addresses some of that issue, but does not address for what Chief Landry is talking to is when when things are to the point where it needs more attention.
Exactly.
Have any thoughts on, on including some language or some particular parameters around, at what point do we deem more attention necessary?
Yeah, I, I I don't see the harm in, even if it is in the host agreement, why, we can't write that in the special permit that if the police go, get called there for a, a traffic problem and they find it, deem it necessary to call for a detail, that they have the right to do it. You know, if it's in the host agreement and it's in our paperwork, it, you know, covers everybody every which way, even if it's already there.
If it's, if there's a safety issue, the chief has the right to call a detail at any time, which overrides this, but if it's in writing, if you want it in writing, we can do that.
No, I would need it in writing, because it's no different than if we find National Grid working on the side of the road. I can't mandate they hire a detail officer. I can send them on their way, meaning they can't perform to do their work unless it's a detail officer. But I can't mandate they have a detail officer there. So if you're going to give me permission to mandate one that's required, when it's required, it should be in writing. It just can't be, you know, a handshake and said, okay, there's no enforcement to it. So something should be, the host agreement, I didn't read. I'm not sure if it spells out that we have the authority to mandate a detail. I don't think it says that. I think it's up to the leisure of the business, and that's, that's not the right way to approach it.
Cassie, can you verify?
The verbiage on that right now, if you give me a second.
Thanks, Cassie. And I think on our end, though, I'm leaning towards it doesn't hurt to have it in two places.
No, absolutely.
Include some language in our special permit that speaks to this directly. I would feel more comfortable. And in addition
That's not a problem to do that as it comes to this this L C, yes.
Anyone else on the planning board have thoughts related to this particular piece and including a piece into the special permit parameters? Stipulating when extra detail is necessary that the Millville safety has that ability to do so?
No, I think it's, I think it's paramount that it be in there, just to cover everybody, and everybody's on the same page, and there's no questions down the line.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, have it in, having it in writing as well. My question would be, what's the process for, you know, for calling that detail? Is it, you know, X number of cars idling on the street for X amount of time triggers, you know, something to to get that detail officer?
Yeah, that's kind of
That would be under the chief's discretion.
Yeah, I would, I agree. It would be common sense. We're not looking to employ detail officers. That's, that's not our motive. You have to keep in mind, like I previously mentioned, we don't have the resources during the day or evening to dedicate an officer to be in that area. We work one man on the shift most of the time, so we can't have him, you know, dealing with that problem. So I think it'd be a common sense thing if we say a pattern of cars developing on a regular basis, say it's a Friday afternoon from two to six is traffic nonstop. That would be an example of when we're going to say, okay, we're going to have a detail officer here during those hours. And if it changes, and obviously a detail officer wouldn't be needed, but I think we'd have to wait and see. Once the business opens, we're doing an evaluation how the traffic pattern is. If there's days that are certainly busier than others, when people get paid maybe a Thursday or Friday, and it's really busy from those hours, then that would be mandated.
I think that makes sense.
I think so, too.
Okay.
All right, some of the other things that I think we need to take a look at would be hours of operation.
Before we, before we go there, can we get back to the, the modified site plan? Is, is that really the best place for the pedestrian crosswalk?
Well, I mean, really, if you think about it, it's really no, really no different than any other drive-through establishment, you know, whether it be Dunkin' or McDonald's. I mean, a lot of them have crosswalks like that. You clearly got to go from the parking lot into the building.
Yeah, I didn't have a better solution. I was just, I figured I'd bring it up.
Going to say, I can think of a number of coffee establishments where you're putting your life in your own hands crossing the parking lot.
And then just the, the other thing, just, and this isn't really a planning thing, but just the, the loading dock is now in the in like the way of the drive-through line? Yeah.
No, that's incorrect. It's the, what's going to happen is you have a concrete area, and they'll be coming through in the concrete area? Or near, I'm sorry, in front of the concrete area.
I, I believe, this is Sean Skunjo, co-owner of 18 Prospect. I believe that they are not going to be using those loading docks. They're going to be blocked on the inside. They're not going to be active loading areas.
Can you explain that a little further?
If you look at, I don't know if Cassie can bring it up, I know it's hot, but she, if you look at the interior plan of the building, that those areas are actually cultivation areas. They aren't really loading areas per se.
So there's going to be a wall, there's going to be a wall in, in the interior part of the building.
Correct.
So this loading dock is not the actual loading dock?
Well, they are, they're bay doors currently, but they, the lifted luxury ain't going to utilize those bay doors. They're, they're going to be, on the inside, they're not, they're going to be blocked off just because they're going to be utilizing the building in a different scenario than what originally was built. So, you know, so those doors, those doors are just going to be kind of false doors essentially.
And is there an actual loading dock for this area that we would need to consider?
Most of the stuff that, I think Cassie can attest to this better than I can, but most of their stuff isn't going to be, it's not like heavy, there's no going to be loading, you know, it's not, it's not kind, it's not really a loading operation. The largest loading that's going to be is probably disposal of any kind of waste, a lot of it, because when it comes in, it's very small packaging, and then when it grows in there to a larger size, but when it leaves, it mostly is going to be leaving in a sales packaging. There's not a lot of inventory, I guess, that's actual, of any actual size. A lot of it would be nutrients or some, some form of packaging and stuff like that, not really.
I was muted as I was trying to chime in, sorry. There, there is one loading dock door that we are going to keep, and we are going to just speak with our contractors and vendors, and during, we'll only accept deliveries in that door before we're open. So depending on the hours, and I, I know that's what we're going to skip onto next, but we would just have deliveries before, say, 10 o'clock. And it would only be probably one or two vendors that we would need to have deliveries on a semi-regular basis, and that would be for our nutrients and our cocoa. And it would come in the way of a small box truck, not a large tractor trailer.
Gotcha. That's helpful to know.
Right, no, that was something that the chief and I talked about last week. We wanted to make sure that we're not running, you know, huge tractor trailers down those small roads. During construction, we'll probably have a tractor trailer in there to drop off supplies, but after that, it would just be regular, you know, UPS, FedEx, small box trucks.
And about how often are you thinking that those small box trucks would be making deliveries?
Probably on a weekly basis.
Okay, perfect.
But I mean, we can set it up. We are, we currently do business with the vendor that we'll be using, and they're a small nutrient shop out of Rhode Island, so they have a store in one socket that will service us.
Makes sense. I know that was one of the things that we wanted to speak about with you this evening was your operating hours. I think we spoke a little bit about this in our last meeting, and I'm not sure that I documented anyway, that you had any set hours that you, that you needed to adhere to. It was more at the discretion of the board?
Absolutely. I looked at, you know, closer stores to see what they had. Obviously, you guys worked with the Garden Wonders team on their hours, and I saw that as a Monday through Saturday, 10 to 8, and then on Sunday, 10 to 5. Close to us would be Caroline's, and they do every day 10 to 7. A couple of others, like Nova Farms opens at 9 and does like a 9 to 8, 9 to 5. And then I saw some that were crazy at 9 to 10, 9 to 11. I know that's outside of the bylaws, but interesting what people throughout the state are doing.
Yeah.
The only thing I, the only thing I like to chime on, and she's right regarding those hours, however, in my opinion, this business is a little bit more unique than Wonder Gardens. Wonder Gardens not in the middle of a neighborhood, an established neighborhood, and Wonder Gardens is off the beaten path, especially with their layout. This particular business is dead set in the middle of a neighborhood. So from my personal opinion, I realize the planning board will make the decision. I find 8 to 8 excessive, seven days a week, just for the quality of life of the people who live there. I honestly think that's, that would be the prudent time slots for them, but that's certainly just my opinion, and I'll leave that to the judgment of the planning board.
Yeah, I mean, we were kind of thinking, or I shouldn't say we, I should say myself, thinking something similar is that, that early in the morning in a neighborhood where we have to worry about kids kind of getting off to school and everything in the middle of it does seem like we should consider some different hours. That being said, I think it's important to consider what you said earlier, is that you're going to want to be having your deliveries happening at an hour that's not during opening hours. So throwing it out there that I was more thinking towards a 10 o'clock start, and you could have your deliveries coming before that is a place to kind of kick off this conversation anyway. I'm not sure if any of the other board members have thoughts on this matter.
Yeah, I agree with the the, the school part of it. Eight to eight was a little excessive. And again, I can agree with the chief. We've got, you know, different, different scenario here entirely. You know, Garden Wonders is just doing retail alone. You're doing a little more than that. And split, and you, you kind of need to, as Pam said, and you said, Cassie, you need to split up your delivery times, the trucks in and out as your drive-through is going to be going through your, your loading area.
What if we were looking at something like your, your your hours of operation, non-retail related, being the eight to eight, but your retail hours when we're anticipating the higher amount of traffic in the area to be limited to starting at 10?
I can be agreeable.
You've what you're feeling on the 8 o'clock hour in the, in the evening, though? I mean, it's, it's doable, but, you know, again, you're in a residential neighborhood.
So I absolutely agree that eight might be too late for that neighborhood. I don't, I don't foresee it being an issue if we closed earlier, say like 7:30, 7 o'clock, something like that. I know that on Sundays, there's a church in the neighborhood. I was kind of thinking on Sundays, maybe we open at 11, and I know Garden Wonders closes at 5, but would you guys be agreeable for us to stay up that extra hour to 6? Do like 11 to 6 on Sundays?
They say like 10 to 7, Monday through Saturday, and 11 to 6 on Sunday?
And I mean, if we really get a lot of complaints, I'd like to be able to come back to the board and ask for that extra hour if it was an issue.
And again, this is retail hours that we're talking about.
Retail hours, yes.
We could probably word it something like could we word it something like open public, open to the public hours versus business operational hours?
Yeah, exactly. I don't want to inhibit your ability to, to take in, you know, those deliveries when needed by the smaller trucks anyway, earlier in the day, or, or even, I guess, a little bit later, if you're thinking like your delivery hours would be that eight to eight, but
And some of it is delivery, but I think some of it, just for the earlier times for them to start, is actual plant lighting, some of that plant lighting and work time, I think is, they need some of that off time, because depending on the actual scheduling of the light cycles, I believe, right, Cassie?
Yes, you're right.
Do you think you need delivery trucks till 8 o'clock at night?
No, no, I would believe that we probably won't accept a delivery after, while the drive-through is open, unless it was like a FedEx delivering through the other side.
So you basically, you're saying your deliveries will come in the morning?
In the morning only.
Do you see deliveries on the weekends or just Monday to Friday?
Monday through Friday.
Okay.
So I'm just going to repeat what I'm hearing, just to, to kind of be clear about things, but I'm hearing Monday through Saturday, retail hours 10 to 7, and weekend hours, sorry, Sunday hours, 11 to 6 p.m. retail, and then delivery hours could start as early as 8 a.m., but not going later than the establishment is open for retail hours in the evening. So that would be again, 7 Monday through Saturday and 6 on Sundays with the option of coming back to us if this is creating some kind of an issue.
Are we expecting deliveries again on the weekends, Sundays?
No, I would believe that deliveries would not happen on the weekends.
I think that's doable.
All right. All right.
So just so I can get this all in writing, so we're talking overall hours of eight to eight. Um, expecting deliveries in the morning on weekdays. And then retail hours of ten A M to seven P M, Monday through Saturday, eleven A M to six P M Sunday. And then, um, they might come to us to ask for extra hours in the future.
And, and I think it sounds like the, the establishments' delivery hours wouldn't be so early on the weekends. But it, it did sound like you would possibly have those needs related to the operations of the building earlier on Sunday. So it doesn't sound like we would wanna necessarily limit those earlier hours on Sunday because of non-deliveries, is that correct?
Right, right, my employees would still wanna be, the cultivation employees would still need to be in the building on Saturday and Sunday early.
Exactly, okay.
Gabe, could you, uh, recite what you just said again one more time?
Yeah, sure thing, so, um, what I have is overall, um, general working hours of eight A M to eight P M. Um, and Cassie, just to clarify, that would hold also on the weekends for like cultivation and, uh, primarily cultivation on the weekends. So, and then for retail hours, um, when the drive-through would be in operation. We're talking ten A M to seven P M, Monday through Saturday, and then eleven A M to six P M on Sundays. And on top of that, um, we're only anticipating deliveries in the morning, uh, like before workout, before retail hours. Uh, Monday through Friday.
Very good.
All right, fantastic, are there any other elements of, um, this special permit? That, that any of the other board members here or Chief Landry would like to weigh in on? Not here, oh, go ahead.
I'd like to, uh, just remind the board that there are other things that are being, um, hopefully approved with this. And that's the extra sign as well as the solar on the roofs.
Yes, I think we talked about those items last week, but, uh, thank you for reminding us. I don't remember there being any discussion of any issues related to the additional sign or the solar. Um, to help with the, uh, I think it was powering the, um, the, what do you call it, the drive-up piece, correct?
It's to reduce, um, load on the infrastructure on the grid.
Gotcha, did anybody have any additional questions related to those items?
No, I mean, I know like with Garden Wonders and stuff we had put in about the, you know, no marijuana should be smoked, uh, eaten or consumed on the premises, all that kinda language. I assume that will just kinda be in, the same kinda language will be in this, and we don't need to go line for line necessarily at this point.
Yeah, I think a lot of that stuff will, is, is already part of the host agreement, I believe. And some of these additional items we can transfer over. But I think the additional asks on, um, their special permit related to what was originally applied for and what they're asking for today. The differences are, um, related to those two additional items, the lighting and the solar.
Okay.
And then we have obviously the, uh, mari- marijuana uses. And, um, what I was thinking is maybe, is it possible to include the host agreement as part of the special permit or have it, um, kind of reference this host agreement?
That's a great question, um. Maybe Gabe, you could help us look into that piece of it, but I think that makes a, an awful lot of sense anyway. If, if there's a, a host agreement that, uh, that exists that we could reference, you know, any of that in the special permit. Just to kind of have that in writing in two places.
Gabe, do you have a copy of it?
Um, I believe I do have a, you, if you've emailed it to me, I should have a copy.
All right, I'll double check and make sure that I did email to you, and I will email the chief also.
But, um, I'll, I'll, I'll ask, um, my colleagues about, um, how special permits for these establishments have interacted with host agreements, um, if there's any issues with that.
Perfect, I, I know we had some of these conversations when we, we worked on the Garden Wonder Project a while back. But, um, I think it's worth asking your colleagues again if it, if it makes sense to reference some of the materials and the host agreement into our special permit. But, um, specifically, I think we wanna make sure that we're just including and updating the existing special permit to include the items which we're talking about, most importantly, which are allowing for the marijuana uses. Um, and the additional, um, signage and, and solar. Because again, this isn't, this is a modification of an existing special permit.
And also of course, the drive-through.
And the drive-through, yes, sorry, I'm, I'm keeping off the list the items that we spoke about last time, but I'm, I should include all of them, but thank you.
Um, I, I'd just like to backtrack a little bit, um, we did the, uh, retail hours. Uh, we did your delivery hours. Assuming these hours would stay the same for the, your cultivation part of it or your, that's when, the only time something will be going on at that facility is within those hours?
Yeah, so I would imagine that our cultivation, uh, employees will never be there past five. Um, I, they tend to work like earlier hours, um, get their jobs done and get out. Um, and a couple of them probably will be working at two facilities, uh, our Rhode Island facility and here. So, um, I would imagine that no one will actually be there past five or six, so we'll never go outside of those hours.
Need to make sure that it, the hours list, uh, cultivation also. And, um, the solar part of it is, is in Rocco, you probably can educate me on this. But, planning board have anything to do with that being it's gonna be on the roof of the structure?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The planning board, is, isn't that all gonna fall under the, uh, the building department, your solar?
Well, it has to be included in the special permit, and once it's included in the special permit, then what we do is we pull the building permit and, uh, an electrical permit. Actually, I don't think the building permit need, uh, needs to be pulled, just an electrical permit.
Okay, is it the, the solar, is this just for the facility or is it getting out to the grid?
Well, this, this is the, right now, the rooftop solar will go to the grid, and we have the option of, uh, selling it back to Cassie at a discounted rate.
Okay.
They change the way they do it, so.
So this is actually a, a smaller version of a solar field?
Yeah.
Okay.
Very small.
My misunderstanding, thank you.
And the reason, the reason I believe it needs to be on the special permit, permit is just because it's a commercial dwelling.
Yep. Okay.
But it's on the building itself, it's not separate from the building?
It will be on the top of the roof of the building, un, it will, it won't be able to be seen by any, you won't be able to see it. It'll just be on the top, it'll be double reflective panels on the top of the building.
Okay, so the, the special permit is needing to include language about the ability to have such solar, but not mandating that it has such solar power, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
And, uh, I know it's not, uh, well, it is part of the special permit. And I, I know all of these fences that, uh, bought your property are existing fences. And I believe they're all part of the neighbors. But are there any intentions to, uh, maybe fix some of them? Or, you know, put something a lot nicer for the neighborhood? Um, being that a lot of it seems to be, uh, falling down, even though that's not yours. Or are you gonna do anything to, um, to eliminate your property lines?
So, um, we had, we're, when we had our public meeting, uh, one of the neighbors asked, um, cause they wanted to make sure we were preventing people from cutting through their property, um, so it's absolutely something that we're gathering quotes for. Um, I know on, um, the left-hand side of the property, the fence looks pretty beaten down. And obviously, we don't want it to look beaten down when we're spending as much money as we are, trying to make this facility as beautiful as it can be. Um, so we will absolutely make it look nice and make sure that, um, the fences are fixed or replaced.
Yeah, especially now, you're gonna have, uh, cars in the drive-through line on that, that side now. You know, somebody wants to keep utilizing their backyard and.
Right.
Used to looking at a dump, and now they're gonna be looking at a row of cars.
So you're amenable to including language in the special permit about maintaining the fences around the edges of the property?
I, yeah, I don't, I don't see why that would be an issue.
All right. Any other items, um, that the, the board members would like to discuss? If there are none, um, I think we are looking to take a vote then. Um, we, at our last meeting, just to reiterate, we, um, did decide that we would be okay with accepting the modifications to this special permit as a minor modification. Um, the next step would be for us to approve this minor modification to the special permit for eighteen prospect. That would be considering all of the provisions that we spoke about today. Including, um, the traffic pattern, the signage, the drive-through, the solar, uh, the hours of operation, the fencing, uh, I think I've got just about all of them in that statement anyway.
We, um, taking a vote on this tonight, or are we gonna, uh, all have a chance to see this um, in front of us? And or, um, I guess I'd like to see the host agreement if we're adding some, adding a piece to, uh,
Yeah, would you like me to put together a modified special permit with all, cause this is like a good chunk of language?
This, this is a good chunk of language, and I, I think that we have some time to go back and forth on the particulars of the language. But I think, I think we can further this along by taking a vote on what we're gonna be including in that, that language. Um, so with the modifications that limit the hours and with the modifications that limit the, um, the traffic patterns, modifications that are going to allow for the solar and allow for the drive-through and allow for the extra signage and knowing that we want to do language that is going to, um, attach back to the host agreement, I, I still think that we can vote on this today without, without dragging our feet on this further. I mean, the host agreement isn't gonna change.
So just to clarify, this is, you're, you're calling for a vote to approve the spe- the, uh, special permit with minor modifications. Um, and to like present the minor mo- like the, 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 uh, completed changes at a later date?
I'm calling for a vote to accept this special permit, my, the modi- modifications to the special permit. Um, and knowing that we're going to be rewriting the, um, the modifications to this special permit. The list of, of, I'm trying to think of the word for it right now, but, but the list of, of what our parameters are around this special permit at a, at a future date, but we can, I think we can approve this now, I think we can approve, I, I think we can approve it as a modification to a special permit today without dragging this further.
Basically, we did that in the last meeting. You can do a, uh, walk, approve, I'm sorry, I stepped on somebody? You're gonna, you're gonna take a vote to approve.
Yep.
Uh, uh, approve the items and then findings and decisions, uh, will be written up by Gabe. And, uh, disseminated after that, is that correct?
Yeah, exactly, that we would work on the decision with Gabe and we would send it to you and make sure that it was in line with everything that we talked about this evening. Um, after the fact, but that, that we would make our decision tonight.
That would be, that would be very helpful, cause I think that this is the last piece that Cassie needs to be able to submit to the Cannabis Control Commission.
So unless there are other pieces of this decision that we want to include, other, other special considerations or parameters that we would want to, uh, include in this language, I think we can work on those lang- on the language behind that. With Gabe and then present that to Cassie and, and her team after the fact. But we could, we could move in that direction tonight. At la- last, at the last meeting, we just voted that, we, we actually didn't even vote. We, we made the agreement that we would accept this proposal as a minor modification and that we wouldn't mandate it to be a major modification, but we never actually approved anything. So it's, I, we would be looking to approve this as a minor modification to the special permit. And then we would need to draft up the decision and have the party sign on it. Are there any additional items that anyone wants to discuss before trying to call for this vote?
No, I'm comfortable moving forward as we, as we kinda talked about.
And again, Gabe, I know we can connect afterwards, but, and, and obviously we'll have the minutes of this meeting to kinda go through everything that we've talked about. But in a nutshell, we're talking about, um, including language around the drive-through, the solar, the signage, the new delivery. Um, the delivery hours, the retail hours, the, the traffic patterns. The fencing.
Yeah, I have all that.
Okay, perfect.
The word, the waiting for the police detail as deemed necessary?
Yes, when the police detail would be necessary and in whatever cases make the most sense. After you take a look at the host agreement, referring back to the host agreement for those items that are already determined in the host agreement. Um, and any of these items that we're talking about that are not already addressed in the host agreement. And, and by that, I mean, I think the detail we talked about is probably addressed in the host agreement. So we, we should have our language kind of match within the host agreement. But for some of these other things, like the hours of operation and whatnot, are obviously, um, modifications that we're making as a planning board. So we would include all of that in our decision, should we decide to move forward as a group.
And I don't know if it's the right place, but do we have, do we allow the public to speak if there's anyone online here? Do we know if there is or?
Um, I don't see anybody extra online, but I think.
It's not a pub, uh, Brian, it's not a public hearing, that's why it's a minor modification.
Yeah, this is a minor modification.
I, I understand that, but I, I was, didn't know if we, uh, could open a public forum if, if there was anyone there. You know, I, I can't tell if there is or isn't.
I, I can't see any questions in the chat and I can't see any additional people on. I'm not sure if anyone from, from cable that is on with us has, can see if anybody else is somehow asking questions of another faction.
I'll, I'll keep an eye out.
Thank you. Um, I should say though, that, that, um, because it's a special permit. I'm, I'm assuming that this is gonna fall under regular special permit rules in which we would need a majority of the vote. And we only have four members present tonight, so you would need to have all four members agree to everything. Um, I think that's probably the right thing, uh, does the board agree?
Yeah.
I know, um, Bill isn't ma- able to make it right now. Um, but unless there are any other questions or, or thoughts related to the matter, I, I think we should, I think we can take a vote. All in favor of approving the minor modifications to the eighteen prospect special permit as discussed this evening, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Justin?
Sorry about that, uh, aye.
All right, that's four. Congratulations, we'll move this forward and we'll be working with Gabe to write up the decision and get that over to you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And Cassie must be happy.
She's on mute, but I can visibly see that she is quite happy right now. Ah!
We'd like to keep her on mute.
Understand. All right, um, we'll, we'll be following up with you with the decision as written this evening and um, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
New year.
Thank you. Hopefully this is good for everybody involved, including the town.
I believe it will be. Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
All right, popping back over to this evening's agenda. Um, the other big thing that we had on our plate for this evening was to talk about the shared planner. Um, over the past week, I have sent over to everybody on the bo- on the board a copy of the draft intermunicipal agreement. And as well as a draft job description. I haven't heard um, any feedback from anybody on this, but this will be a good time if anybody wants to weigh in on the shared planner, any of the aspects of it um, that I have sent over to you. I, I know some of the materials were quite long. Um, but really what I think we were looking to address is making sure that the town of Millville has enough oversight of the position and enough um, ability to weigh in on how it's going with having a shared planner, ability to um, change the situation at certain points throughout the contract and the ability to weigh in on what we're looking for in a candidate. So I wanted to kind of open up the discussion and see if anybody here has anything to say about that. Did everybody receive the intermunicipal agreement and the copy of the job description?
Yes.
I'm not sure I got it all, but it's probably me not, not knowing where to find it.
So when I, I sent it to you earlier this week, I popped everything into one document, so you didn't have to look for everything.
The Google Doc.
Yeah, I put it all into uh, one Google Doc. It had the job description, it had the intermu- intermunicipal agreement and had a list of the questions that have been brought up from different meetings that we've had uh, about concerns that, that we've had either as a group or have kind of been brought up to our attention through other sources.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not able to open that. Yeah, I didn't realize it was everything.
You give me a minute, I'm looking for the document. All right, since Brian said that he didn't have it, I just sent him a copy of everything as a Word document and as a PDF. Did anybody else not receive any of these materials over the last couple of weeks? All right, I think um, again, and I mentioned this two weeks ago, that, that the other towns that we're looking to, to enter into this shared agreement with are, are really kind of chomping at the bit and they're, they're looking to move forward with this and it's, it's held up um, on the account of us not weighing in on some of these items and, and delaying some of our feedback. Um, I know one of the things that was holding them up was knowing whether or not our Board of Selectmen would be amenable to, to an intermunicipal agreement or a shared planner contract. Uh, they did have a conversation at one of their previous meetings recently where they did say that they would be open to it if we presented um, an agreement that, that made sense for the town of Millville and that it was up for us to, to try to come up with what that was. I think some of my hesitation with this agreement is making sure that we have enough oversight of this person having so few hours um, that we're requesting and again, it's in that six to 10 range based on what, what our, our budget is. To try to get a, a planner for the amount of hours that we need, I'm, I'm gonna be doing what I can on, on our end to, to push for the more hours than less hours. But I think what we're really looking to, to get a handle on is oversight and, and having somebody that's going to be a part of the hiring process and having a plan for being a part of the oversight process. Um, how often do we want to be having conversations with the other member towns about uh, how it's going? You know, biweekly, is it weekly? Taking a look at that job description and making sure that we have enough language in the job description to cover what it is that we are looking to do uh, here. Again, taking a look at, um, I did send over a couple of times a chart of the cost estimates. I, I think that I think there are two conversations that we need to have related to the cost estimates is one, they did a great job at, at sending over um, an estimate of what it would look like at, at six hours for Millville, at the high end and the low end. And I know previous to that, we took a look at a chart that had the 10 hours a week at, at the high end and at the low end. And I think that as a group, um, especially now that budgeting season has come along and I also sent you over a um, preliminary draft budget that I would like to talk about this evening. But how do we get the money that we need in order to have the planning services that the town needs? Especially as we're continuing to see increased number of applications and in, and a desire to grow across the, the town. I think we need professional services that are gonna cover that. So again, that would be why I'm pushing to have more hours. Um, additional things in the intermunicipal agreement included the payment schedule and the description of the town of what the shared planner would look like. I did ask for the group to include some language in the shared planner description that would cover some of the administrative duties that our town planner would need to handle because we do not have an administrative assistant as some of the other towns do. I know that there are possibly some possibilities, you know, maybe into the spring when we have some additional help at town hall that we could maybe lean on somebody else to help with some of that administrative stuff. But I think for the most part, the administrative duties of our town planner are gonna fall on the town planner. Um, and I want to make sure that we're talking about that when we're hiring the person. Does anybody have any other concerns or thoughts related to this topic? It's, it's a good like nine or 10 pages or so that I sent along.
Do you?
Yeah, I'm just look, looking at some of that now. That cost estimate. I'm sure I could go look at the budget, but where, where are we planning on starting?
So in this document that I sent you, it was the cost estimates for Millville to participate in this town planner at six hours, which is significantly less than what we've determined to be what we need. However, it's what fit into the budget as it is today. All that being said, there's a little bit of flexibility with this because we have um, you know, the, the intermunicipal agreement is looking for two payments, both of which come in the following fiscal year. Um, and I know that we're redoing budgets now and I think it's really important for us to come up with a plan for presenting to the finance committee what we need as a board and what we need to get the planner that we need in, into our town anyway. Or we've been completely unsuccessful at, at holding on to somebody um, as our, as our own employee. I think that this makes an awful lot of sense for us to look at, but we do have a need as a town. We can say that we could do it for six hours, but that's, that's at a, a reduction of what we've already determined to be what our need is. So I, I think we should be going to the planning, I mean, the, to the Board of Selectmen and to the Finance Committee and asking for the 10 hours that, that we need that we already know to be what we need, especially as we have increased number of applications coming in on a fairly regular basis lately.
So what are we at now for the, the planner, planning line? I see what, I see what you put in for, or recommended.
So what we're at now um, on the salary line is, is roughly the maximum that we would hit at the, at six hours of the shared. So it's a, that, it's like 14, nine or 15 range, right around there.
Yep.
Um, so that, that was why we got to, that was how we got to the six hours that we were requesting originally. But I, I, and I know with this got brought up at one of our last meetings, that what if, what if right away we realized that six hours is not close to enough? Then, when that's roughly half of what we were looking to see and how could that possibly grow? And I think that the first step in us finding a way for it to grow is to go back to the budgeting process and try to get what we need.
Agreed.
So when I, the, the draft budget that I sent you increases, um, I gotta take a look at it real quick, but it increases the salary line. And it increases the line for advertising because we've seen that, um, and based on a decision that we made a couple of months back, that it's not clear in any of the Millville town documents that the applicant is responsible for the advertising costs. And we did have several conversations and some research done by CMR PCs. I forgot her name, Sarah Adams, I believe, when she was working with us for a bit on the uh, fees that are involved with planning applications and what that includes. And we determined that our fees were so high that it would be not right to include the advertising on top of that. So I think that we need to in- increase that line item a little bit more to cover the advertising costs related to things like special permits and site plan, public hearings.
On top of, on the budget, on top of adding to the, the planner, um, previously the planning board had um, uh, third party, a, a different person as a secretary who kept the minutes, who did the admin work. And it was a paid position, um, you know, I, I really firmly believe that we should be uh, putting a number together for the townspeople about admin support on top of it. Because everything doesn't have to be done by the planner and rightfully so, it's not gonna be done if, even if we get 10 hours a week. Um, but a lot of the other stuff that could be done is gonna be admin clerical work. I just don't know if that should be added into our planning budget, or we should uh, be entertaining the town administrator uh, within the town hall salaries um, for admin support for the planning board. You know, previously there, it was one of, it was the uh, assessor who, you know, had a small salary to be the admin clerical for the planning board.
Yeah, so I, it's my understanding that they are looking to bring on some administrative help in the spring and that that person was gonna be helping out the town administrator and a couple other departments, the building department and possibly us as well. But we're not, they're not there yet and we have our needs now. And I, we just keep seeing the number of applications grow, so I, I think we should try to include what we can into the planners line and, and if it gets to the point where we realize that we need administrative help on top of it, I think we could try to figure out how, how to ask for that help from that.
Yeah, I think it's an overall picture because I know uh, the highway department's been without uh, full clerical admin support since February, along with the building department and uh, again, us as the planning board have suffered right along. I, I really think it's time that we, we get the help we need.
I'm right there with you and if it means that we end up in, increasing our salary line and that brings us a planner for six hours and a, and a administrative person for six hours and that's how we decide that we need to slice and dice it. But I think the, the bottom line is we can't do it with what we have.
No. Nope.
And I, I think that's why we're getting.
So what, what is the deadline? What, how, how soon, other than yesterday, are they looking for uh, us to uh, get this back to them?
Great question. Let me look it up real quick.
I mean, from what I've heard, I think they were looking to start the process, um, like the hiring process, probably, I mean, as soon as possible, but it sounded like January. Um, and trying to get someone hired by like February or March, that seemed like the timeline I heard.
For the, for the shared planner, they're looking to post, they wanna post that job in the next couple of weeks and, and look to bring somebody in very, very soon. They're, they've been, they've been waiting on us. I think if they could have pulled the trigger a month ago, they would have done so. Um, but I think part of, part of us kind of getting all this together is, is figuring out what we wanna ask for, for the budget and how we can kind of move things forward and how do we get what we need so that we're not stuck into a full year of not having enough of what we need. Uh, right now, we already don't have enough of what we need, we know this. Um, so I, I think talking about them in tandem is important, but, but bottom line, and I, I sent this off um, when I sent all the materials to you guys a couple of weeks back, they're, they're looking for a decision now. We can't just keep meeting and saying, oh yeah, I'm gonna take a look at this and then not taking a look at it. We need to start making some decisions and weighing in with some feedback and letting them know where we stand, or they're gonna move forward without us. Again, some of the things that I felt that were missing from, from the job description was a conversation about some of the administrative responsibilities that we would expect to have our town planner do in, like if this person came on board next month and we didn't hire an admin person at the town hall for another couple of months and we had no idea what kind of help that would, that would take, we would need to have admin support and this person should come on board knowing that there's gonna be some administrative duties and it's not just full on strategic planning all, uh, every moment that they're with us. So I think that piece was important to include. I also, also think that it's important to have um, some language into the agreement that insists on regular meetings with the other towns so that we can have check ins about what's going on, whether we're getting the six to 10 hours that we've requested or we're not, or um, you know, are we feeling like everything is going fairly? I also felt that it was important that we, we had an out if this really wasn't working um, for us for some reason or if, if, if either A, it really wasn't working and we wanted out of it at some point, or B, it was really working, but we wanted to have a discussion about adding more hours in at some point. Um, I wanted to have some language in the intermunicipal agreement that would allow for some of those discussions. Those are the pieces that I've requested so far, that are in addition to what you already have in front of you. that are in addition to what you already have in front of you.
I think that makes a lot of sense. And honestly, I agree with you. Many concerns.
Yeah. I mean, the good thing is that everything that we're seeing as a board, in my opinion, point to to more things coming in, more applications coming in, more inquiries inquiring about spaces in town. And I think that's all what what everybody in the whole town wants to see. But we're going to fail miserably if we don't have the ability to process those applications when they come in on a timely fashion. And we don't have the ability to get that information in front of all the departments, and we're struggling to get timely notifications into the newspapers. We're not going to be as a desirable place to come and build your business. So having the infrastructure in place is going to allow for our board to move things along and to help the town grow. So it's kind of a a big circle here, but how do we get from where we are today, which is chugging along and having somebody on our calls like every other week complaining that we're not managing things well or figuring out how do we get the infrastructure to help us manage things in a better fashion?
I I think we need to move this forward. You know, I'm reading through it now and just making sure we have some of those things in there, which I I see a lot of good terminology in there, so.
So certainly, Menden and Uxbridge are getting the lion's share of the hours to the tune of like eighteen for one of the communities, sixteen for the other. Are they? Is there any concern they would be growing at a at a particular rate that would have them back out to hire a full-time planner? And if one of the other communities were to, you know, pull the ripcord on it, like, where would that leave us?
That's a really great question. That's another question that I've forwarded along already was, I I know there's some language in this intermunicipal agreement that allows for another town to back out. And my questions were, what happens then? You know, something back out and now all of a sudden those hours need to be split amongst the other two towns when we can't afford it necessarily? Or does that limit the hours of the person that we've already hired in a fashion where maybe they the job would no longer be desirable to them, and we'd need to be looking for another planner at some point? So I definitely forwarded along some of those questions, really, to specifically to that. What that doesn't necessarily address is if, I don't know, halfway through what we're doing, another town decides that they need all of our hours, does that boot us out for some reason? And I I don't think it does. I think I think that piece of it is kind of included in the the 12 months or so that we're looking at, but that very well could mean that in 12 months, we're looking at a completely different situation. All that being said, that's still twice as long as we've had of being able to hang on to a planner so far. So if if we're being real, that's that's six months longer than we've had for a while.
Okay.
And I know it's not ideal, but.
I feel like we just need to take the chance and look, if it works out, great. If it doesn't, well, then we're our Plan B, and what Plan B is is the same thing we've had every other time, you know, we we figure it out worrying about what if when we're going to get nothing done.
Yeah, I I completely agree with that. And I think, you know, part of the problem that we've had is having so few hours that we're finding to be necessary for the position and able to fund the position, bringing somebody who's always looking for the next best thing. If we bring in somebody who is able to work a full forty hours and has benefits, I think we'd be in a much better position of of not having that person walk out for the next best thing. You know, they're not going to go to the next town that's offering twenty hours instead of twelve. They're going to be looking for a completely different package. So I I'm hoping that partnering with these other two towns are are going to build a position that's desirable to somebody and not feeling like a stepping stone, but that's the chance we take. So my plan in moving this forward anyway is is, like I said earlier, I did forward along some of these concerns, some language I would like to see in the job description, some language that I would like to see added to the intermunicipal agreement. I had some questions that I've already sent along related to kind of what happens if another town decides to back out. I'm happy to forward all of that information to you when I receive it. But should we be able to get to a point where that language that we're looking to see added into the job description gets added in, I would be comfortable with having them post it. And to start the search for this tab, shared planner. Once they post that position, we would need to make sure that we felt comfortable with the intermunicipal agreement. Therefore, I'd be looking to see that language that we've sent over added in to the intermunicipal agreement. And if anybody has any feedback on that between now and then, please send it over. But that would be one of the next steps. And then I think the third step would be having a member of our committee here or our board needs to be part of the hiring committee for this new shared planner. Unless somebody else wants to to take on that position, which I'm I'm one hundred percent happy if you would like to. It seems like I'll continue on in that fashion and and be part of that hiring committee. Again, totally willing to give that up if you want, but if not, I will I will do that. And then we'll we'd be moving on. It's my understanding that once they posted the position, there's a somebody from CMR PC that would be helping to review those applications and narrowing it down to the applicants that we would interview. Gabe, please jump in if I'm getting any of this wrong. But that they would they would narrow it down to a select few folks that would be brought before the committee, the Hiring Committee, which would be one person from each of the Planning Boards for the three towns to help make with that decision.
You probably have a better sense of that than I do, but I I think that's accurate. Sorry, Connor, I think is going to be has been pretty involved in pushing this forward, so.
Yes, he has.
I think CMR PC would be pretty involved up until, or at least Connor would be pretty involved up until the hiring, so.
Gotcha. Yeah, so that that's kind of what I'm seeing. And then and then the language that we have in there thus far talks about us kind of having consensus on on hiring of the person or any person in that position, which I'm going to guess is going to include if if for some reason the person that we had were to leave and we needed to have a second committee in this amount of time to look for another candidate would be the same thing. We would have one person from each of the 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 towns be part of the Hiring Committee to bring on this person. Does that sound amenable to you guys? As as a person, why?
Agreed.
All right, so I'm I'm just going to continue on in this fashion. And and again, if you if you have any thoughts on this at all, something that I'm missing that you want to see included or a question that you want to to bring up to the other towns or or something you'd like to see added in, let me know. But otherwise, I'm I'm going to continue to push this in the fashion that I just set forth.
Thank you, Pam.
Right. So those were the big items for tonight. I know we also had on the list to talk about the signage bylaw, and and I sent that information over to you guys after our last meeting a couple of weeks ago as well. I sent over a document that had our current sign bylaw language in addition to some language that Sarah Hoker, our our previous town planner, had been working on adding and and changing in the bylaw that would help make it a little clearer to understand. And then that same document also had some of Lincoln Barber's suggestions that he was hoping to see in the language. Additionally, I sent over a couple other towns signage bylaws that I thought had a lot, a lot of other towns had a lot more information in their signage bylaws than we include in ours. And I thought it might make sense for us to review what some other towns are including in their signage bylaws before we decide what makes sense for ours. I I know I know the most important piece in looking at our signage bylaws to make sure that it's clear. We have a lot of wishy-washy language in our current bylaws. It makes it really difficult to enforce and making sure we have clear and concise language is our first priority. But I think secondarily, if if there are pieces to a signage bylaw that we could be considering that that we're not just because we haven't thought about it or because it's not already in there, we should probably take a minute to think about that as well. So before I continue to have those discussions with all of you, I want to make sure that you have those documents that I sent over. So I believe it's our current signage bylaw with the suggestions from Sarah Hoker and the suggestions from Lincoln Barber, as well as there were three other towns that that I came across that had some language that I thought was worth entertaining in their signage bylaws. Did everybody receive that packet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Pam, there's two different colors of edits. There's some red, some blue. Who's our Lincoln's and do we know?
I want to say that Sarah's was red and Lincoln's was blue, but let me open up the document real quick and take a look. Yeah, Sarah's Sarah's was red and Lincoln's was blue.
Lincoln's was red, Sarah was blue.
Other way around. Sarah's was red, Lincoln was blue.
Sarah was red, then. Okay, thank you.
All right. Does anybody have any questions about the signage bylaw documents?
I don't have a question, but I wanted to make sure, kind of related to the signage bylaw, I can go over the DLTA stuff real quick when we're done with that.
Perfect. Yeah. So in addition to all of this, at our last meeting, Gabe brought up that there might be some CMR PC services that we could apply for a grant for that could help us with modifying some of the signage bylaws, possibly, and some of the other. I mean, I know we have a list of bylaws that have been kind of highlighted as needing some attention, to be kind, anyway. So, Gabe, yeah, could you give us a brief overview of of that opportunity?
Yeah, so I mean, it's not this, it's not really it's a good opportunity, but it's not super imminent. It'll probably not be for a couple of months. I'm not totally, I think it'll, I think we kind of start up DLTA stuff in February or March. But basically, CMR PC will get a chunk of grant money for district local technical assistance. And from there, we can talk to, we talk to boards in different towns and planners in different towns about projects that like they need assistance on. But that's going to be that's going to be sort of initiated on our end. So if you guys have like a list of things you'd like to work on, I mean, I'm happy to communicate with you about getting like figuring out what sort of DLTA projects you have, like things you think you could work on. But it's really up to the board to kind of, if you have a list of projects, you can, when when that funding comes, if CMR PC is going to reach out, you know, we have, we've heard from boards in the past, we reach out to them about projects. So once that's sort of in the pipeline, I'll reach out to you guys about when the like what the exact process is, but the funding is not coming for a little bit, so.
I I think I love the idea of this, and I know we have a list of of some of our bylaws that currently exist that that we've been asked to look at as a board. And I know even just at our last meeting, Lincoln brought up some small scarce, small-scale solar project bylaws that we don't even have that would probably make sense for us to seek out this type of assistance to help us with. But I do believe in the meantime, in order to be moving something forward, we could continue to look at the signage bylaw and make some of our own recommendations to move that one forward before the spring town meeting and still be able to to use some of the CMR PC assistance, if if possible, anyway, to take a look at some of those other things like for instance, the small-scale solar or.
Yeah, so CMR PC has helped towns, even towns with planners who don't just don't have the, you know, if they only have one person even working full-time, so as they don't have the the means to work on the number of projects that they'd like to work on. So bylaws revision is very, like, I've worked on a couple of those like in a secondary capacity. So it's a very, it's a very standard thing for us to work on. So it definitely is like a project that Millville definitely needs help with. And, you know, we we should be able to help out with that in some capacity.
I think that makes a lot of sense, and I want to, I definitely want to continue to seek out that help when when that becomes available and and whatever it is that we need to do, Gabe, if you could please keep us in the loop on that. I would be more happy to fill out whatever applications that would be required in order to seek out that type of assistance. But I don't want that to I don't want the potential of that coming up in a couple of months to stop us from thinking about some of the things that we could be making some movement on right now, like the signage one, for for instance, anyway.
Did you send me the signage stuff? I don't believe.
Forward it again to you now, just in case I didn't.
Okay, because I don't remember seeing that, but I may have missed it.
It doesn't look like you're on it.
Oh, okay.
I'm sending it right now, Gabe.
Great. So I I can take a look at that this week and just see if I have any for the next meeting, if I have any input.
Perfect. And that that's kind of what I would suggest to the rest of the board to please take a few minutes over the next couple of weeks and read our current bylaw and the suggestions from from the previous planner and from the building inspector and take a look at some of these other towns. I think I sent over Menden Douglas, and I think I I sent over Wellesley. I know that Wellesley is not necessarily comparable, but they had a few things in there that I would love to to consider with you folks at some point that I found to be interesting, anyway. So take a look. I looked at probably twenty different town bylaws when when choosing a few to send over to you, and I thought these were were different enough that it it would at least get the juices flowing for a conversation next week, or rather, at our next meeting. Unless anybody has any thoughts about continuing that conversation at a different time, I think our next meeting makes a lot of sense. Right? I have completely misplaced my agenda for this evening. Gabe, are we on track? Is there anything?
Yeah, there's not much else to discuss. I it's just stuff for me at this point, and I'll keep this quick. No pending applications. I have one business cert for Andy's Auto Sales and Service at two forty Main Street. Does is that good to certify?
Does anybody have any concerns or questions about Andy's Auto Sales?
Okay, seeing none, I'll bring that in this week. And I think that's it. Yeah, do do we do we want, I mean, Pam, did you get the email from Richard Hurtow today? He sent a letter, I believe, last week that I have right here, but it's regarding the ongoing bond issue.
Yeah, so I mean, maybe just to get the board up to speed on on some of what's been going on. I don't know if I saw the one from today, but I know in in general the town is looking for the Mylar plans for for the road acceptance that happened back in the fall, and there's been some issue with finding them. Gabe, maybe you can speak to that.
Yeah, I need to, I'm gonna leave, Diane and I spent a little, like about an hour and a half last week looking in the town records for, there's two different things. Basically, we're trying to find any agreement that was signed between Mr. Hurtow and the Planning Board or the town. Probably in two thousand and two regarding these road approvals. We've not been able to find them, but also a lot of the records don't go back before like two thousand and seven, so we might have to go to the old town hall to find them. And then additionally, So we might have to go to the old town hall to find them. And then additionally, we're looking for Mylars for the, um. For that, for the carriage estates one, um, which we have not been able to find, but I'm going to reach out to Andrew's engineering, um, to see if they have copies. But yeah.
Yeah. So that, that's in a nutshell. So we need to get the Mylars found so that we can sign off on them. And then additionally, they're trying to find some of the paperwork from the original agreement back in the early 2000s. Related to the initial bond that was put down on the roads. Um, I know is, is what they were looking for. So I, I'm saying this to you, I know we're all relatively new members. I don't think any of us have any additional knowledge of, of what went on in, in 2002 or 2001 or whatever it was. On this, but, but should you, um, I think Gabe would, would love that knowledge if you have it.
And honestly, any, uh, knowledge about the carriage, because I know that development's been happening for, I mean, it just is getting wrapped up 20, basically 20 years later. So if there's any information about it that I should know about, um, like in terms of any sort of agreements that were made. Um, please bring that to my attention. Cause I'm not, I'm actually not sure if that agreement hap, like the agreement that we're looking for happened in 2002. Um, but there's like a huge binder with a lot of old planning board documents, um, pre, some pre.
At the email, like, did you look, search the emails for the town planner emails for back then?
Uh, I have not, but I can, I, I haven't gotten access, I can ask for, yeah, I can look, I can look into that. I don't know if the email records go back that far, but I can, I can look into that. That's a good idea.
Yeah, definitely take a look into that. Cause I know in the past, when I've needed to find some documents, they, they go back pretty far. So I, I would, I would take a look there.
Look there. So thanks for the insight. I was assuming it would just be physical.
But my, my law copy doesn't, isn't that going to get supplied by the developer?
Yeah, it was supposedly dropped off and we can't find them.
Yes, I'm gonna ask for it again.
Recently? Was dropped off?
I don't know.
Yeah, we're not, I guess we're not quite sure.
We need to get, uh, Peter on this.
Cause that, you know, my knowledge going back to like 2017, there was some potential for road acceptance inspections that. Um, deadlines weren't met, so it didn't come to, to light, but I don't believe that. I don't know that anything was ever handed Mylar copies at that point. I think, uh, the layout of the road might have been handed in at that, that time.
Okay.
Uh, which we had got, we, I know we had when we took acceptance this time, but I, I don't ever remember the Mylar company. Copy coming in because it never came to the point of being accepted.
And we had, we did have newer plans that we used for the road acceptance that we had digitally. And I.
Correct. That, that was the, the layout of the road being plotted, but the Mylar is a separate, separate piece. It's usually provided by the engineer through the developer. To the town for the road acceptance. And to my knowledge, I believe that. I, I could be off for a little bit, but I think that goes to the board of Selectmen.
Well, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm reaching out to the engineer. So hopefully I can get, if that was through the engineer, hopefully I can get a copy through them.
Is everything else, um, in line now, or is there anything else still out there on, on that carriage estates one?
Um, there's like this ongoing issue with the bond release, um, that I like, I'm, I'm sort of involved in working to resolve. But I've been trying to find these documents we're talking about.
Okay.
To kind of establish, um, like which, which costs were paid for by the developer.
Yeah.
But, uh, that's, that's pretty much it.
Yeah, I think the rest of it's moving along. It's just about getting some of, of these fees sorted out. And then getting the copies of the Mylar to sign off on. So that's Carriage Estates. And, um, I don't think we have any other updates on any other outstanding projects currently. I know there were a few kind of sitting out there over the last couple of weeks, but nothing new right now. So if that's all, then our next meeting. Where's that my calendar? Would be the 11th. Does that still work for everybody? 6:30?
And, uh, we're gonna go back over the sign by law at that meeting?
That's the plan. So right now.
Do we want to invite Lincoln or do we want to hash it out first?
So since we haven't had a, a minute to discuss it as a group, I think, I think it makes sense for us to discuss it as a group. And then we can, we can decide to invite me, um, Lincoln to the second meeting in January, if that makes sense at that point. But at least we can kind of wrap it around it.
This, this would want to go forward in, in May with the town meeting. So we have plenty of time.
Exactly. But I, I think that's a, what Brian brings up is a good point is if, if, if our intention is to make it to the, to the spring meeting. We, we need to keep some deadlines in mind. So, um, I'll, I'll try to dig some of that up for our next meeting too. We can make sure that we're working backwards to meet any deadlines so that we can, um, present our work at. The next meeting anyway. But other than that, our next meeting will be planned for January 11th at 6:30. The main topic will be our sign by law unless another application comes in between now and then. And the shared planner, obviously.
Very good.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Perfect. Second, first, thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, it's 8:06. Everyone have a good night.
Hey, happy to hear, everybody.